Welcome, everyone, to the June 10, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. As far as roll call, all Board Directors are present. Moving on to the open forum, we had no speakers for tonight. So next, I'm going to ask for the approval of the agenda. I need a first and a second.
So made.
By Jessica Olsted.
Second.
Second by Enrique Velezquez, by Director Velezquez. Next, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second for the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of routine items. There are the financials, purchase orders above 25,000, monthly financial report, enrollment report, approval of school board minutes, personnel items, and district legal notices, in which we are now going to be publishing our notices on the website due to the Southwest News Media being out of business. So I need a first, a second.
So made.
By Director Burnick.
Second.
Second by Director Olsted. All in favor?
Director Franz?
Yes.
I'd like to pull several things out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
If we could please pull purchase orders above 25,000 for discussion, monthly financial report, I have a couple of questions, and then the enrollment report, please.
Okay, so all three of these will go into new business, Martha? Yeah, new business. Okay. So that will be B, C, and D. So I'm going to ask again, all in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of B, purchase orders, C, monthly financial report, and D, the enrollment report? Aye.
Aye.
That passes seven zero. Okay, moving on. Resolutions for the acceptance of gifts.
So made.
Do you want to talk about this, or do you want me to read them off?
Okay.
Okay. So the, tonight, for the acceptance of gifts, we have $504 from APAC, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, for supporting the American Indian Ed Program. $1,200 from an anonymous donor for the support with, support for resources and supplies. Another $300 from the SMSC grant through the Minneapolis Foundation for supplemental curriculum resources, and $5,000 from the PLS Optimus Foundation for ECFE, Early Childhood Family Education, School Readiness, and the Edgewood Playground. So all in, this is a roll call vote. We'll start with Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Director Velezquez?
Aye.
Director Burnick? I mean, Director.
Aye.
We're all out of it. Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Olsted?
Aye.
Okay, that passes, aye, that passes seven zero. Okay, next, we move on to Laker Pride.
Thank you, Chair Franz and Board Directors. This evening, we have one of our students from Twin Oaks Middle School, eighth grader Daria Maximov, and her teacher, John Wabi, to showcase the World of Eight Billion Student video. And she competed for this contest, and her video was titled Better Outlooks for Vaccinations that won her second place in the competition. And so with that said, I would invite Mr. Wabi and Daria to come forward and talk a little bit about the event and the competition, and then maybe, Daria, you can speak a little bit about your video itself.
More than 33,000 students in grades six through 12, representing 100 different countries in over 50 states, have participated in the video contest in the past 13 years. This year, over 3,000 videos were created for the annual World of Eight Billion competition. Participants were challenged with the task of producing a one-minute video on a global topic related to human population growth, including an idea for a sustainable solution to the challenge. This year's topics were climate migration, invasive species, and public health. Daria's video focuses on the importance of modern vaccines and their role in maintaining a healthy global community. And as you said, she won second place in the nation.
Daria, do you want to talk a little bit about this video?
So, I made the video in hope, so, I made the video so we can focus on maintaining a sustainable population, and I really hope that my video can really inspire and impact what the video is about, like vaccinations, because they would help maintain a sustainable population, and, and population growth is one of the biggest factors on climate change. So I think it's very important that we focus on vaccinations.
Thank you.
Very good.
Can we see the video? Can you see the video?
Do I play it through here?
Yep.
That's it. Okay, and this is Daria's video.
Our population is growing, expected to reach 9.8 billion in 2050, but so is the risk for infectious diseases. However, vaccines being the most effective solution have been becoming a problem. In a survey towards 22 million people responded, about 40 to 47% of Americans were hesitant to take the COVID-19 vaccine. Running to virtual epidemics comparing populations, we can infer that a more urbanized population leads to more infections. Population growth has a lot of impacts on our health, causing factors of climate change, food demands, and migration. These all lead to more outbreaks and more diseases being spread around. One of the major reasons people are resistant is misinformation. Therefore, to ensure that people get the best weapon against disease, we need to promote vaccines. We can promote them by leading example, providing assistance, talking to friends and family, and dispelling misinformation about vaccines. To ensure vaccines can keep a healthy, sustainable population as we grow, we should work together, promote together for a brighter future.
On your competition.
Thank you.
Bobby, thank you so much for your leadership. We're going to have you come forward here for a picture.
Franz, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Of Daria?
Yes.
Before you leave, did you do all the graphics and everything, and the editing, and all of that? That was 100% you in your class. That's pretty cool. Thank you.
Good job, very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are personnel items, and I'm going to hand these over to Director Administrative Services Herman.
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the Board. The first one that we're bringing forward today is additional staffing requests for certified staffing. We have an additional need in our blind visually impaired student needs. We currently have a .7, and we're adding a .5 FTE need. At the same time, our partnership with Southwest Metro is indicating they are struggling to recruit for positions and have recently had two resignations in this area. So the hope is for us to try to recruit internally as a district to see if we have a better success at recruiting a candidate. If we are, then we would be able to reduce our contract with Southwest Metro for this need. And it also is a preemptive way to try to make sure that we can recruit either through Southwest Metro or the district to prevent costly external vendor, because if we have to go to external vendor, those contracts tend to be very costly. So this is our request to try to recruit internally as a district.
I need a motion and a second, which I should have asked for first.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director Bullion. Any questions?
I have a question. What's the difference in the cost between what we're currently paying with Southwest Metro versus the cost that's indicated of 120,0700?
Director Atkinson, I don't have the cost of the contract for Southwest Metro at hand right now, but I can get that back for you guys.
Is it similar, or, I mean, do you have?
I wouldn't, I don't want to guess on that at this time, but I can look into it and get back to the Board.
Okay, and like, so basically, you're just saying, can you give more explanation of why we wouldn't continue the contract, other than they're having a hard time recruiting for it?
If they're able, Director Atkinson, members of the Board, if they're able to recruit for it, then we wouldn't hire the position. The concern would be if they continue to be unable to recruit for the positions that they have open. Right now, they're, again, they've lost two individuals through resignations. If they continue to struggle, which they have been struggling for months to hire for, then this is our attempt to try to hire it. But if they're able to hire, then we would have that option to stay with them and not hire internally. But if we hire first, then we wouldn't go with them for that contract. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the external services. So if we were to have to go that route, hypothetically speaking, what's the cost for that on a, like a per instance or per use basis?
I'm going to ask Director Chuka if you can come forward.
Thank you.
One more time?
Certainly. So if we, we're not able to hire for it ourselves, just like Southwest Metro was not able to hire for it, and we utilize a third-party service, what's the cost for that level of service?
Probably about triple what we pay now. Contractors charge us anywhere from 150 to $300 an hour. It kind of depends on who they are and what they do. And our blind visually impaired needs have considerably increased. So I think to answer the question on the cost of contracting through Southwest Metro versus our own, it's a little cheaper here. It's not, there's not a huge difference, because we have that partnership with Southwest Metro, so that's, that's the benefit. But they're having a hard time recruiting, and we're hoping maybe a single district might be more attractive versus, you know, when they're hired for Southwest Metro, they're often, one of the reasons they leave is they hop around district to district. So, but everything else.
But do we also share that cost with other districts as well? So it would be lower than us hiring?
It would depend on our needs. So if we needed less than a 1.0, yes, but we have over a 1.0 need for blind visually impaired. So we, right now, would need to contract for more than a full-time position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a question to Director Fredrickson on the impact to our budget.
We have this included in the budget. This would be a special education position that would be reimbursable. So eventually, as we get the actual costs for all the special ed positions, we'll see the reimbursement in two years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call a vote for, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. And the next item is also, Director Hermans.
Chair Franz, members of the Board, the next request is from the community ed, asking to add a second position for the community program assistant due to the increase in enrollment needs and also additional needs in the building monitors. This would provide a stable staffing for the summer, seasonal again, same that we brought forward the last time, but this would allow them to add a second position to add the, or to address additional enrollment needs that they have in these programs.
I need a motion and a second.
So made.
By Director Burnick.
Second.
Second by Director Bullion. Okay, any questions for Director Herman? I don't have any questions since this is community ed. All in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. And then we have, and I'm not sure how you, I assume we want to do these separately, Director Herman. So next, we have board action on each one of the contracts, the PLSAA, the MSEA, the Prior Lake Savage Principals, or PLSPA, the Prior Lake Savage Administrative Association, and the.
Chair Franz.
Chair Franz, yes.
TNC. Reference to TNC.
Oh, TNC was additional staffing for community ed.
It's a second one?
Another position?
A new, different position?
Oh, there's another position in there. I'm sorry, that's not in my summary here. So go ahead.
Chair Franz, member of the Board, the third staffing request is also from community ed, but for certified staffing. They have seen a significant enrollment in their Monday, Wednesday, and Friday AM class, and they hope to meet that need and demand from the community, and also provides them additional opportunity to have special education inclusion classes. The additional cost would come from the O4 fund.
Okay, I need a motion and a second on that.
So made.
Director Crosby?
Second.
Second by Director Olsted. Okay, any questions on this position, on the certified position? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. All right, now we go on to all the acronyms from, no, we don't, there's another one? Nope. I don't have.
No.
Oh, that, that's what I said, that's where we're going to go into all the, okay. So the next one is the PLSAA sick leave pool enhancements. I need a motion and a second for this.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Burnick, and Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the Board, we're asking tonight to bring forward an existing concern that we would like to consider resolving. Currently, the sick leave pool in the teacher's contract requires them to qualify for LTD. In order to qualify for LTD, you have to be on leave consistently. You have, you can't have breaks in your leave where you're able to work. So anybody who is on an intermittent FMLA leave never qualifies for LTD, therefore, they never end up qualifying for the sick leave pool. And we have staff members who are on different, differently, medical leaves that impact themselves as an individual that are intermittent in nature. We had talked with the union about this, and we both agreed the intent of the language is to help staff members who are dealing with long-term medical needs for themselves. And adding this additional language would allow then for the sick leave pool to help those individuals, so they're not on unpaid leave when they reach the, when they reach their cap of their leave, if they have intermittent leave needs. So we're asking for your consideration to approve this MOU so that those individuals can have access to the sick leave pool through, through the teachers' union.
Okay, any questions? All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay. That passes seven zero. Now we go on to the MSEA, Minnesota School Employees Association. I need a motion and a second.
Bullion.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Crosby. Okay, Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the Board, we are excited to bring forward today the settlement with MSEA Para Educators Group. As we have reported in the past, we are significantly behind in internal and external comparisons. We spent the last contract trying to get closer to those comparisons, and then this contract to reach a lot of those internal comparisons. We feel it's a really wonderful step in the right direction for this employee group, and it will hopefully help continue our ability to recruit and retain these very valuable staff. And so we're bringing forward this tentative agreement that we reached with their, with their negotiations team.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. And next is the PLSPA, the Prior Lake Savage Principals Association Agreement. I need a motion and a second for that.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director Velezquez. And Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the Board, are excited to bring forward another settlement. This is with the Principals Association, which covers the assistant principals and principals. We were able to reach a tentative agreement that addressed some of their priorities and also our priorities, and bringing it forward for your consideration here tonight.
Any questions from the Board?
I just have a question on the, remove the principal incentive pay. Can you share information about that and how it changes the contract from what it is currently?
Currently, there is an MOU that provides an additional stipend for principals should they meet different goals that are set during the evaluation process based off, from their supervisor. It was our priority to remove that incentive pay from, from their contract. So we, we did propose that, and they agreed to remove that stipend.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. And now we move on to the Prior Lake Savage Administrators Association, or PLSAA agreement. I need a motion and a second for this.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
By Director Burnick. Okay.
Chair Franz, as it's the contract that I fall under, I'll request that Dr. Thomas presents on this one.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. For what you see here tonight is for the executive directors within the district, and what you'll find is that, as we were talking about with the budget, a couple of things. One, for this next year, there will be a furlough MOU, which is a significant thing I wanted to make sure I call out, of six days that that will be taking to reflect a reduction in salary, to say with some of our budget reductions. Our salary schedule enhancements, you can see 2.5, 2.5, and total compounded is about five and a quarter. And, and then the health insurance allowance that we have an increase to, we also had to reflect the 13th holiday per state legislation with our district, and such reflected into this contract as well.
And any questions from the Board on that? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. That passes seven zero. And I believe this is the last one on my list? Okay. And this is the approval of confidential group contract, and I need a motion and a second for this.
So made.
By Director Olsted.
Second.
Second by Director Bullion. Okay, Director Herman?
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the Board. We are excited to bring forward another settlement with our confidential group, which includes members of the HR team and the business office assistant. We were able to get to a couple of their priorities, and bringing forward the settlement that we came to agreement with them today for your consideration.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, that passes seven zero. We have no unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business, and we're going to first go back to the items that were pulled off the consent agenda, starting with purchase orders above 25,000.
Thank you, yes. I had a couple of questions regarding the purchase orders over 25,000. In fact, this one is quite a long list, so I think it's important to be transparent with what's included in here. The first question I have is about the CPM curriculum. I know we reviewed this in our meeting when we reviewed CPM, the $373,000 for this curriculum. The question that still continues, that I continue to get from our constituents is, I'd like to get some clarification on the workbooks, and there's seven years' worth of workbooks. So can you help me understand, are we going to receive seven years' worth of workbooks? Because there was a shipping charge of, I believe, like $33,000 within this invoice. So what do we, and what do we do if we decide not to use the curriculum after three years? Do we get, you know, money back for the seven years' worth of workbooks?
Thank you, Director Atkinson. I have the quote right in front of me, and I will read the language that they put in here around shipping. You will receive your first order shortly after your order is placed. Subsequent year shipments will be made annually prior to the start of each school year. The shipping amount quoted includes all shipments for this order and will be billed on your original invoice.
So all the shipping and all the workbooks for seven years? I mean, how do they predict that shipping costs go up in seven years? So they're just saying they're going to hold their shipping costs?
That's, that's how the contract is written.
Okay, that's good.
That's the quote that we got, so they'll be held to that.
So it's just a one-time fee, there'll be no recurring charges?
Correct.
Okay. And then do we get, do we get money back if for some reason we decide not to use the curriculum after several years? Would you know, or?
I'm assuming that that would be a negotiated item.
Okay.
I mean, we've signed a contract, so.
Yep.
It would have to be negotiated, anything outside of the contract terms.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. The other question I have is about the Apple, the 1,400 Apple iPad lease payment, two of two, for $230,000. Last year, in about the same meeting, actually in the July meeting, we approved $230,000 for the 14 iPads that were used against our fund balance that we approved as a board, and now we're seeing the charge again here and on purchase orders over 25,000. So knowing that that was a one-time expense, why are we seeing it again on the purchase orders?
I believe when we originally presented the budget last year, there were some items that we asked to take out of fund balance that weren't necessarily one-time items. They were all non-salary, because we had committed to not having any salary expenses in there. But some of the expenses that we did itemize in that budget document were, in fact, going to be repeated. So for instance, we had the transportation increase in the contract was in there. There was this Apple lease, which this was a two-year lease. This is, what you're seeing is year two of the lease. We also had some non-salary program expenses for the emergency preparedness and response program. Those were continuing needs. And then we also had some math curriculum, which, again, we include curriculum in each year of our, of our budget. So what you're seeing here is the second of two payments for the Apple lease.
So will this payment then come out of fund balance?
No, we have it budgeted. It comes out of capital operating revenue.
Then how?
All of our leases come out of capital money.
Can you help me understand why the first payment would come out of fund balance, but the subsequent ones would not?
It didn't necessarily come out of fund balance. It doesn't, when we close the year, which we haven't done yet, so we don't know how much we're going to have either going into or out of fund balance. You don't have a list of items that you say, here's what we're taking out of fund balance. It's just if you overspend, you take it out. If you underspend, you put money in. So there's not, in our audit, you won't see, here's the list of things that we are taking out of fund balance. But I can tell you that where we are challenged in our budget is around capital expenses. We only get about $2 million in capital revenue, and we have extensive needs. So for last year, the year before, and probably this year, again, we haven't closed the year out, we are going to be overspending in our capital dollars. We have aging buildings, we have a lot of needs, and capital operating revenue can only be used for leases, technology, equipment, and curriculum. So after we take out of all of the leases and apply about $1 million to our operations department for those capital needs, we've expended all of our capital dollars.
So I appreciate that, that explanation. I apologize, because I have a, a document from last year called New Investments, and it literally says 545,000 technology upgrades, including sixth and 12th grade iPads and HP Labs from fund balance. So I, I apologize if I wasn't clear. I thought that that was a one-time expense. So thank you for clarifying that. And those are, and then I have one other question about the High Point Network, Aruba Central Software for $60,000. Is this a new expense? I believe it's an upgrade to a wireless network. Is that for? Is that for the district or?
Yes, right now, we currently have an on-prem, on-prem network. This is to make it cloud-based. So it's a upgrade to our current system, our current Aruba Central system, but it's now cloud-based. So it is costing us a little more money. It's a new, it's new in that it's cloud-based, but it's still the same vendor, just no longer on-prem.
All my questions for that.
On C, monthly, oh, by the way, does anyone have any other questions on this one? Okay, and then on C, monthly financial report?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question for, it's on the monthly financial report. So in here, since this packet only goes through April of 2024 and we're almost to the end of the year, correct, June 30th, end of the year, it shows that on here, sorry, I should have brought my glasses, for fund balance, that our fund balance is of April 30th was 22 million at 19.45%. The, that includes the assigned and the unassigned. Do you have any sort of idea where we're going to land at the end of this year, given there's only two weeks left? And then my same question applies to, I can see where we're at with revenue and expenses through this April report, but can you give us a little bit more of an understanding of where we're going to end the year here in two weeks? With those numbers as well?
So we won't be able to really give final numbers until in the month of July. Because again, we don't get bank reconciliations until the middle of the month. So we'll just be getting all of our bank reconciliations and all of our month-end reports for the month of May. And then we'll have the audit begin in second week in July. And then as we start the audit, we can get all of our final numbers. But we anticipated being right around what we projected the budget to look like.
Okay, thank you.
And next, the enrollment?
Yes, I have a question about enrollment. If I can find it, hold on. Okay, so my question is, is that it looks like with the data that we've received through, I apologize, my print office cut off, but whatever this current date is on this report, we are down 45 students in the high school from the beginning of the year. And that's where we're seeing our greatest loss of students. And actually, in kindergarten, we have an increase in students of only like three students. But do we have any data that is telling us, like, why are we losing these students in the high school? Have we done the surveys that give us more indication of why these, why we're not meeting these needs and why these kids are leaving in the high school?
That trend is something that we're accustomed to seeing at the high school. Our enrollment does decline over the course of a year. Overall, in summation at the end, we don't have any specific data because it requires our, the people who are leaving to provide us with that information. I would say, again, it would only be anecdotally that we would have any information. And the range could be families moving. It could be graduating early or exploring other alternatives to finish their high school with us, i.e. online opportunities. So those are some of the reasons that we would typically know. Early graduation being one of those factors.
So if somebody graduates early, they cannot count it as a student in our district?
They would not be enrolled at the time of these numbers.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying if they possibly graduated in June or whatever, what date does this report through?
January, for example, if they graduated after first semester, end of January or after third quarter, if they've met their graduation requirements.
Then they wouldn't be. Okay, all right, that helps, because, okay, thank you. And then when you're looking at the budget, we're at 8,576 students. Where are you looking to forecast the budget at? Or we can talk about that when we get to the budget, because I know we had originally talked about 8,700.
We're still anticipating the 8,700. Again, we're seeing a slight increase in our kindergarten enrollments. We'll continue to monitor that as we get through the summer. And then if we need to make an adjustment, then we will talk about that in September, once we see what kids actually show up.
That's encouraging, thank you.
Right. Do I need a, Martha, do I need a motion to go back? Okay, so I need a motion in a second to approve these three items off of the consent agenda? Everybody mumbled.
So made.
So made, okay. By Director Atkinson in a second, by?
Second.
By Director Olstad, okay. All in favor of the consent agendas items C, D, and, I'm sorry, B, C, and D? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes seven zero. All right, moving on in the agenda to the Q Comp end-of-year report and presentation. This is a report only. No board action is requested.
All right, so we do come here typically at the end of each year. We did last year, we provided some information to you. We're going to bring you some slightly different information this year in this end-of-year report around our Q Comp and TDE program. And Brandy will go into great detail. Brandy is our Q Comp coordinator. And just for contextual awareness, once again, as a board, we have a Q Comp program that's part of our evaluation system. We have, in addition to Brandy, we have nine peer coaches who are assigned to our respective sites to support our teachers in professional development and evaluation system. And Brandy's going to share with you tonight some additional context around work moving forward as the state legislative requirements of new frameworks for teacher evaluation are coming online. We're going to share with you in anticipation of that, some information this evening.
All right, good evening, board. I am honored to be standing in front of you tonight to share some updates from the work that I have been doing in addition with several other helpful people on LAI. So we'll go ahead and get started. Again, the purpose of our Q Comp program has an emphasis on student achievement using a combination of professional development opportunities, including collaborations among our certified staff members in learning teams, multi-tiered goal setting. So teams set a student achievement goal, they have an individual student achievement goal, and a professional personal goal. And an observation and evaluation process that encourages self-reflection. And that is our aim, so that we ensure continuous improvement and learning for all of our certified staff members. So this past fall, I meet with a group called the South Metro Q Comp Coordinators. And there are roughly between 20 and 25 districts represented. And Tyler Livingston, who is in charge at MDE or oversees the Q Comp initiative, came to meet with all of us to share an important set of statutes that was created in the legislative session. And all school districts, including charters, are going to have to adhere to these statutes. And the three main areas that needed some modifications were that our evaluative frameworks needed to be representative of something called the standards of effective practice. We needed to have culturally responsive methodologies included into our framework. And we needed to provide common descriptions of at least three different levels of performance on our evaluative framework. So we are excitedly ahead of the game because these statutes go into effect during the 25, 26 school year and we are ready to go this fall for our 24, 25 year. And our hope is that if any small adjustments or modifications need to be made after a year of implementation, we have the necessary time in which to do so prior to submitting it to MDE for final approval. One of the main things that we needed to take a look at and embed into our current framework are the standards of effective practice. And these are on MDE's page. There are eight different standards of effective practice. And these were developed by the Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, or PLSB. And all districts must adhere to embedding these standards. So within each of the eight standards of effective practice, there are smaller subcomponent standards as well. So we needed to make sure that we took all of those and embedded them into our current framework. What we found is that these standards are highly reflective of equitable practices, cultural sensitivity, high expectations, developmental appropriateness, accommodating for all students' individual needs, the appropriate use of technology, and student agency or the assumption of student responsibility, being more invested and highly engaged and a partner in their learning journey. So it was very important to us in our department that we adhere to the state standards, that we are using curriculum that supports them. And now our framework for professional development also adheres to those standards. So our instructional focus embedded into our new frameworks is that of equity, so that it empowers not only teachers, but our students to build an environment that nurtures all, everyone who's in the classroom. And we also empower our staff to teach authentically, to be responsive to their learning communities, and most importantly, to be flexible with those learning opportunities. We want to have purposeful learning as well. So we are making sure that we're adhering to the standards, using standards-based curriculum, making sure that we have learning targets that are visible, so that not only do our students know what they're learning, but more importantly, the why behind it and how it connects to what's going on in the world outside of the classroom walls. We also want to focus on something called the habits of mind, which is aligned with world savvy and getting our students future-ready. We want to make sure that we're personalizing and differentiating our instruction to meet the needs of all learners on the spectrum and that we have balanced assessments. And most importantly then, on our teacher framework would be principled teaching. We want the students and the staff members' well-being to be a focus alongside our academic achievements. And we want to purposely connect our students to their learning experiences, so that it's not just to sit and get, they are hands-on, highly connected and involved with our educational journey. So the exciting news is that a couple of years ago, I got my eyes on the updated 2022 Charlotte Danielson Framework. We have been using the Charlotte Danielson Framework since the inception of Q Comp here in our school district. But Charlotte Danielson decided on one of her last missions to update. The framework that we were using was the 2015-16 to her 2022 version. What I loved about the updated frameworks is it contained many of the statute for the standards of effective practice. So we did a cross-reference to make sure that all of the standards of effective practice were embedded into the Charlotte Danielson updated evaluative framework. And for those areas that were not, we made sure that we put them in there. So you can see that we are still keeping with the four domains. Domain one is all about a teacher's planning and preparation. Domain two is now the learning environment, making it inclusive of the student and the staff member in a partnership. Domain three is learning experiences, how we're engaging our students in their learning and passing responsibility in a scaffold way onto them. And domain four is all about principled teaching. Making sure that the reason that we're showing up every single day is our love and passion for what we do. And we never lose sight of that and we continually foster that love for learning for ourselves personally and professionally as well. With those domains, we have done a lot of professional development this past year. I visited with Dr. Edwards every single site in January to kind of reframe our expectations on evaluation. And then we also went back out in the spring along with several of my peer coaches, Lee and Allison, who are both here this evening. And we went to every single site and in addition to several learning teams. So all in all, I think we held about 77 staff development training to support these new frameworks. And what I wanted to showcase here is that for Q Comp, in order to be eligible for any salary augmentation, you must be in the green areas. So anywhere from approaching, accomplished, to distinguished. With the new frameworks, there is one change that is very important and that staff will need support with. And that is moving from accomplished to distinguished. It is not our expectation or our belief that every staff member must be distinguished. It is our expectation and hope that we all become accomplished teachers. And that is where you are completely in control with teacher-directed success. In order to move towards what we've learned through world savvy and getting our students ready for the world outside of the classroom walls, we're really focusing on that student agency component. And so when you move towards accomplished to distinguished, you're moving towards student-directed success. They are helping to design their learning path. In addition, that does not mean handing over control or the reins to the students in the classroom. It means honoring their voices, honoring their passions, and getting them ready for graduation and tackling that next chapter in their life. So we have gone out and really supported staff's understanding of what this is going to look like while adhering to the minimum of those three evaluative components. So we have four. So the implementation status is, in the winter of 2023, the statutes were shared with all certified staff by myself, visiting every single site. We then, this spring, updated the framework to reflect the statutes through the Q Comp Governing Committee that meets. And we went back out along with the peer coaches and shared these updates and changes with all of our certified staff. And now in the fall, when we come back, we will have full implementation of the statutes and framework evaluations and continue our professional development and support on behalf of our certified staff with these changes. And one of the first things that we would like to do is I asked at Q Comp Oversight if peer coaches could get their hands on a book called Student Agency in the Classroom, so that we could have a train-the-trainer type of model. So we will be doing a professional book study on that and creating resources to then go out and support all of our staff with one small request of even being granted 10 to 15 minutes at every site staff meeting to share a new key learning or takeaway from this book. We know that we're going to need more, but we're taking small steps towards making greater gains.
Before we jump to this portion of the presentation, I just want to add additional work and support that's going to be happening this summer as we prepare for this launch for the fall. We'll be pulling together all of our principals, assistant principals, directors, assistant directors, all who are responsible for implementing and carrying out the evaluation framework with their respective certified staff. And we'll be kind of doing a refresh. In third week of July, we have identified the dates for this and doing a refresh as we implement new frameworks. And a refresh on our procedures and protocols around our observation model, which includes a pre-observation, the actual observation itself, and the post-observation conversation with the supervisor and the certified staff member. So that too will be coming in preparation for this launch. And just to reiterate a comment that Brandy made earlier in her presentation. And just to reiterate a comment that Brandy made earlier in her presentation around the fact that we are essentially a year ahead of the requirements on this, giving us a time to move forward with that implementation, continue the learning as Brandy talked about in the previous slide, and evaluate as we go with our implementation so that we'll have a better sense and be up and running for that official '25-'26 school year of implement, full implementation. So without that, with further ado, we'll take your questions.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Does anybody have any questions here?
Any more question? Thank you for this, this is really interesting. On the descriptive indicators for the new evaluation, the bright red unsatisfactory to the left, so obviously at the bottom it says coaching support opportunity, which I'm happy to see. So what happens, I mean, how long does that take? Is that a school year to kind of move up to the approaching indicator? Or is it, what's the timeline to kind of give this teacher, you know, the support he or she needs to get to that next step? And at what point is it, okay, this isn't working out, or we need to do something else here?
Right, thank you very much. That's a great question, and I think it's kind of individualized based off of the scenario that you are given. I conduct observations and evaluations for low-cycle staff. So we have a three-year, where we do two years of low cycle and they go on high cycle with an administrator. I can say that in my eight years, I have never marked unsatisfactory, I have marked approaching. I would say that more unsatisfactory markings may be coming with probationary or newly-hired staff that are not necessarily tenured. If someone is marked unsatisfactory, that would be an opportunity where the site administrator and the peer coach and any other support such as a differentiation specialist may come together and work as a team to support that individual. So we would take a look at the greatest area of need and start working that way. I have worked with staff members before where for one quarter, I went in and helped team plan with that individual who was struggling, and then modeled instruction, and then we did a series of team teaching until they were comfortable stepping back into the role independently. So it could take anywhere from a month or less up to the full year. At that time, the site administrator, I would assume, is very highly invested in providing those supports to that staff member, and then they would be making those final decisions. I don't have that responsibility, so I'm not sure.
And I'll just add, that high-cycle sequence that was referenced there could result in a multi-year, if necessary, opportunity to continue that growth and support model.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. One of the, right from the beginning, Dr. Edwards, you stated that the presentation itself is slightly different. Can you compare? I didn't go back to look at it, but can you just kind of highlight what is different and why it's different?
Yeah, so last year, we brought some data that we had collected from our participants, from our teachers, and shared, there was an annual collection of feedback that we get about how the program is working for them. They respond, and we had brought in the areas that we had seen positive growth and the area that we were going to be focusing our attention on. We felt tonight, and for this particular one, because of the significance of the shift, we wanted to make you as a board aware of that with regard to the framework, so that's why we shifted our approach to tonight's presentation.
Just to kind of further on that line of questions, I appreciate that, you know, QComp being with the emphasis on student achievement. Going forward, will the presentations be consistent to how it was tonight?
So I would anticipate that we would definitely want to come back a year from now and share with you where we're at specific to this topic and any tweaks that we are making as a result of the work that we've done over the course of the last year, most definitely. And that would seem to be inappropriate, I was thinking of that as you were speaking and as we were presenting, that that very much will. We also could bring that additional data, I don't know if any of that you want to speak to that we shared previous, because we did collect it.
I know that several of the data points are in the QComp TDE year-end review that is linked in the agenda, but I do have percentages, if you would like me to share those with you right now.
And can you repeat, what are the percentages of?
So we do a year-end QComp TDE annual review.
Can you tell me what TDE?
Yep, that's the Teacher Development and Evaluation.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, yes.
Acronym.
Yep, exactly, there's so many of them. But yes, so we do a year-end survey. It is a requirement of districts who have QComp, and then we send that out to all certified participating staff members who are 0.4 FTE or higher. And we ask them a series of questions in all the components of QComp. So we ask them about their satisfaction or their overall feelings towards being a member who's observed and evaluated in the QComp area. We ask them about their learning team, kind of focus and their work. We talk to them about their overall goal-setting and the student engagement survey, and ask if there is any changes or modifications that they wish to see. And so we gather all of that data, and then that's what I use to put in the final report at the end of the year. So I have some data, if you would like me to share that with you or not, it's totally fine.
I think we're good. We would like to see it, not good, we would like to see it, so.
Okay, okay, all right. So one of the main areas that we saw growth in, that we were super excited about, was one of the questions says, "My observation and evaluation included an opportunity to engage in all of the components that QComp holds." And we had a 98.4 satisfaction with that. So of all of the people or staff members who took the survey, which is roughly 196 responses, or 33% of our staff, they gave us a 98.4 satisfactory. Another area, it says, "Please indicate the overall value of your observation and evaluation experience," meaning whether it's a peer coach who is observing you and coaching and working with you, or that of an administrator. We had a 91.3%. So both of those areas jumped almost 5% from the 23-24 school year, or excuse me, the 22-23 to this passing school year. Another, which is really important, is the premises of QComp is that of self-reflection and taking into account, like, what are the areas that are my strengths and what are the areas that I need continued professional growth in? And so the question said, "My participation in QComp has influenced me to be more reflective in my practice," and we had an 89.8%, which was a 3.6% growth from the previous year. So it means that this is working and we are building highly reflective practitioners in their field. An area I will share that we always continue to strive for excellence in are those of student engagement surveys. And that is where our certified staff are asked to give a survey to a group of students, and we find out questions such as, "My teacher is excited to be a teacher and a learner," or "I feel safe in my environment, my peers are respectful of each other and the teacher." So there's several different components that we ask questions in, and that one is the one that we continue to work on. The overall satisfaction of that one is going back into, it says, 81.6% are satisfied with that. So the governing committee says that's okay, but I like percent, so that starts with a nine. So we continue to tweak and modify, so much so that we've asked staff to help participate, like, what would you like to see in the surveys? If you could write the survey, what would you want? And as long as we're adhering to the criterion which we need to follow in QComp, we're always making modifications to the survey. They can add questions to the end for their own benefit to tailor their instruction. We've moved the due date up to January 27th, which is more of a halfway point, so that they can take that feedback and make the necessary adjustments to their practice to support that student stakeholder feedback. So that's an area that we're always continuing to grow positively in.
Any questions, Director Velazquez? Director Adkins?
Yep, I do have, do you have a question? Oh, okay, no, I have a couple of questions, thank you. How long have we been in this program?
How long have I been here?
Well, no, have we been participating in this program?
I believe about 10, 10 years.
Okay, great, wonderful, okay. And then I have a question, are staff required to participate in this? And if not, how many do participate in it?
They are required. It was a union vote from our teacher union, and so majority ruled, and we are all required. As long as you're a 0.4 FTE or higher, you are required to participate.
Okay, thank you. And then you said salary augmentation, do they get different compensation if they're at different levels of like approaching, accomplished, or distinguished? Is it like a bonus type of level of compensation?
They do not. So the way, the breakdown of the salary augmentation is because QComp is based off of professional development, and it's our greatest source of professional development to learn from one another, we have an 85% attendance mandatory. So all staff members must adhere to that 85%.
For learning teams.
For learning teams, yes, for our learning teams that meet either weekly for 50 minutes or twice monthly for 90 minutes. So our office makes sure that we're keeping a pulse on that attendance, and they are required to create agendas as well as talk about what they are discussing, what their plan is moving forward, and what types of questions they're addressing and data that they're unpacking and observing. So if they adhere to that and they complete all of the observation reflective paperwork in Talent Ed, which is our program that we use, they would receive $1,040 to be paid out on June 15th. In the fall, we come back and we take a look at their learning team, student achievement goal. If they met their goal, they will receive an additional $559, and the site goal, if they meet that, is $1.
Oh, funny.
So those two, the goals are paid out typically on October 15th, because sometimes teams use an MCA assessment, and we don't have the results right now, so then we do our goal payouts in the fall.
Well, that was, that kind of prompted another question. I apologize, but I was going to ask, what type of student achievement goals are set by the teacher? Is it by individual student, or is it for the classroom, or like, how do they set their student achievement goals?
It's actually based on their, it's based on their team. So as a team, what we ask is that when the school develops their school continuous improvement plan, and we take a look at the areas in which the site has focused on, usually in the area of literacy, maths, excuse me, science, equity, we, their, or their learning team and individual student achievement goals need to support the direction of the site. So once a team has come up with a student achievement goal using SMART goal language, it has to be approved by the site administrator and the peer coach. And so if there is something that needs to be modified, we usually work with the learning team, and it's usually by increasing the rigor or percentage in which will yield higher student achievement results.
Okay, thank you. And then another question, one of the concerns I've heard from teachers is how much time is actually it takes to complete the Talent Ed tasks? Do you have any feedback on that?
You can put as much or as little time into that as you wish to. What we have is for every observation that you have, you have a pre-planning form and a post-reflection form. And typically, there are anywhere between three to five questions on the form. And so if they're very narrative, such as myself, I will spend as much time as needed to feel that my professional integrity is shown in the paperwork. Sometimes people are more concise and they can get the job done in a handful of sentences. We do have the right as an evaluator to request modifications to any of the forms if we did not feel that we got a complete overview of what we're coming in to see, or if there was adequate reflection after our post-observation meeting. The only other forms would be the goal forms, where they have to state their goal, and then mid and end year, they need to provide tangible evidence of progress towards their goal.
Thank you.
I just might add, the completion of that process, both the pre and the post, are requirements of the TDE, Teacher Development and Evaluation System. So those are standard examples of requirements that are associated with the program. So we are responsive to or responding to the requirements placed before us with regard to evaluation.
Thank you, and I promise I only have one more question. I did actually, thank you for including this report, I read it from cover to cover, so like, it took a long time, I think, I don't know, I think I spent two hours reading it, but I'm just kidding. So the data that you answered, Director Bullion, you know, it was included in this report, but when it states under, I don't even know how, "Impact, 49% of learning teams spent time developing differentiated personalized instruction based on student data." Is that a good thing or a bad thing? Like, are we, from a curriculum standpoint, are we providing, and how, maybe how does that compare to other districts? Are we providing curriculum where the teachers have to supplement half of what they need? Or are they, you know what I mean, or is our curriculum meeting their needs so that they can focus on, you know, student achievement?
We took a different approach this year, specifically at the elementary level, where Brandy worked very diligently with our, with all of the peer coaches and with our curriculum specialist, Gwen Molden, who had brought forward our Bridges implementation. So worked with alignment of our goals to the work that we were doing in the curriculum category and the expectations that we had around that, so that the QComp observation frameworks, that they were making their goals around, was targeted to that. We are intending to do a similar approach as we transition with curriculum in other areas and move it to the secondary level. Anything you'd want to add to that?
Yeah, and I think a lot of that, where it says that 49% are actively differentiating, when I look at that in a staff perspective, and I attend learning teams on a rotational basis for all of them that I cover, a lot of that is taking a look at the data from both formative and summative assessments and determining which students may need more support or which students seem to have already mastered that based off of pre-assessment data. And so a lot of that at the elementary level would look like small, flexible groups, so that they may take a look and notice a trend or a pattern with a small group of students in, let's say, double-digit multiplication. And so you may, as a teacher, be pulling them aside and just working with them in a smaller group or more one-on-one to strengthen their skills and confidence in that area, but it's not necessarily finding other supplemental materials. We use the curriculum that we have, we just then personalize or tailor it to a smaller group of needs.
Thank you for sharing that. That is it. There was a lot of great data in here, so thank you, it was really, it sounds like a great program, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, I had a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yes.
Under recommendation number two, you refer to the differences between low-cycle and high-cycle experience, could you explain that? Would you like me to, or?
Go ahead, and I'll fill in.
Okay, all right. Low-cycle is conducted by peer coaches, doing the observations and evaluations. High-cycle is conducted by site administrators. And what we have noticed, based off of stakeholder feedback, is that we're really trying to strengthen the fidelity of the observation process, meaning that typically, we as peer coaches will spend anywhere between 20 to 30 minutes during a pre-observation gathering information about what we will be observing, and at that time, maybe making some recommendations or sharing some instructional insight. Our observation... Our observations are typically always pre-scheduled and will occur in a setting anywhere between 30 to 60-plus minutes. And the post is a 30-minute reflective conversation. At times, staff have mentioned that administrators may not be able to have that much time, especially during pre and posts. Or perhaps maybe the framework, which is the evaluation form, might not always happen in that seven-day turnaround based off of other commitments or things that come up at the last minute where peer coaches, we don't have to worry about that. So what we're working towards, and part of what Dr. Edwards had alluded to, is that we are working with site administrators this summer to kind of have that observation evaluation reset and training on the new framework and the look fours. So that no matter what level you're on, you're going to have a very similar experience with timely constructive feedback to hopefully grow in your instructional practices. How did I do? Okay. Right in front of my supervisor. Okay.
Another question that I had is, first of all, I do appreciate the full report. We've gotten this multiple years and I can see it's become more and more robust. But I, I did see a little bit on there where the work to actually help the educators learn how to dissect and use the data more efficiently going forward. And I understand that, you know, based upon what you were stating with the surveys and the FastBridge and the MCAs, as well as the individual teacher, the amount of data is becoming quite large. So how, I saw that the recommendation to do that, but of course, there wasn't a how to do it. And I was wondering when that was going to happen or if you already know.
Yeah, I think that is definitely something that we continue to work at. You mentioned FastBridge, for example, building our understanding, our staff's understanding of the usefulness of that data and what elements and components that data has available to us and makes available to us to inform us about our students as learners. That is an area of continued growth and something that we continue to be committed to doing more of as we move forward. So I think that that, we've only been at it for three years now. I think that we each year see an indication that we understand it better and we're committed to continuing to do that so that we can utilize that data to help inform the learning team conversation that was alluded to earlier, so that a group of teachers sitting down together can share what they're seeing in their data related to their individual student and that which a colleague is seeing and how they're strategizing doing that small group instruction, for example, to support students. So definitely our, our usage of our data, we have a lot of it available to us. And continuing to figure out how best to use that is always a priority.
Thank you very much. Did you want to add anything?
The only thing that I can add is that peer coaches do an exceptional job meeting with learning teams. Again, every week for 50 minutes or twice monthly for 90 minutes, where we help them develop their student achievement goals and then help them bring data to the table to unpack that and figure out what we can do with it instructionally. So there are supports and site admin are at those learning team meetings as well, supporting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thanks for the report. There's a lot of hard work that went into this. And I have seen the percentages increase over the years for how they're using peer coaches. And that 98% is fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you very much for giving me time tonight to share our work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to go into the preliminary budget. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this will be the final discussion of the budget and we'll end with a vote. So before we start the discussion, I need a motion and a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Crosby.
And can we request a roll call vote for this, please?
We have a roll call vote already on it.
All right, thank you.
Director Frederiksen.
Thank you, Chair Frans, Director Superintendent. We've had several meetings now where we've been discussing the budget. There is only a couple slight changes from our previous conversations. As you're aware, we've made some reductions in our budget. We still anticipate having about $957,000 that we will be asking to use the unassigned fund balance for. The only difference on this final preliminary budget that we're going to ask you to vote on is that I have increased the revenues by about $1.1 million to reflect the additional $315,000 that we're going to get for Read Act that has to be spent on teacher training. So there also is an increase in the expenditures in that same amount. We've also increased some of our special education needs. So we will anticipate an additional $325,000 in special education revenue. But there will also be $325,000 of expenses to offset that. And then we anticipate, as we did some refunding this year from some of our investments, that we were able to get some better interest rates. So we're anticipating an additional $460,000 in interest income. So I am therefore increasing the estimated revenues over what you saw the last time we presented by about $1.1 million, and then increasing the expenses by about $1.2 million. The additional $100,000 is for increases in our district insurance policies. For some reason, this year, we've had a significant increase in the number of claims on our general liability insurance. And therefore, we're seeing some increases in our cost of the insurance. So we're adding another $100,000 in our expense projection for that. But other than those changes, everything has been the same as we've discussed in the last few meetings. So there is a resolution that we're going to ask you to approve tonight where the general fund revenue is $121.8 million, the expense is $122.8. The food service fund will be $7 million in both expenses and revenue. Community Ed, $7.8 in expenses and revenue. Our debt service, $16 million. Our trust fund, revenue of about $640,000 with expenses of $8,500. Our custodial fund, $18,000, will be $6,000 in revenue and expenses. The internal services fund is $18 million in revenue with $17.2 in expenses. And our reverberal trust or OPEB is $135 million in revenue and $1.3 million in expenses. For a total of all funds, $172 million in revenue, $172.7 million in expenses. I can certainly take any questions.
One thing I want to point out before we take questions is you also have stated the estimated fund balance for the end of 2025. On June 30th is being 11.3%, which is still within our fund balance policy, which is eight to 12.
Correct.
Okay. With that, I just-
Again, that's going to be dependent on how we end this year, which we are estimating right now.
Okay.
We'll begin that work in three weeks.
Okay. So questions?
I had a question on the, Director Frederiksen, on the trust fund, the expenses of $8,500. What kind of expenses are those that just stuck out to me?
They're usually administrative costs just for maintaining the fund. If you look at the Fund 20 and Fund 25 and combine them, the two of them together, they kind of net out together.
The, the last line item there? You said 25?
Fund 20, the internal services-
Fund 20, okay, sorry.
20 and 25.
Okay.
Those are reflective, they'll be reflective in our final audit report.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Where is the list of what will be spent with the $957,000? Of what that's included for one-time spends? I believe that was requested at one of our board meetings to see an actual list like we have in the past of what the one-time spends will be.
So as, as I mentioned earlier, our biggest challenge that we have in our budget is our continued needs in our capital funds. And because we've had significant increases in the capital operating revenue and expenses, it puts a strain on our Fund 1 dollars. So most of what we will see this year, as we did last year, was expenses in our operations department where we have overspent. And those would be non-salary, hopefully one-time cost. So there'll be insurance increases, some utilities, some maintenance that we haven't been able to cover out of the operating capital because it's being spent with our leases and some of the needs that we have in maintenance.
There's no way to be, to provide a list where we can be planned for? I know you had mentioned something about a pool repair. So there's, there's no way to provide a list of us what this million dollars is. And the reason I ask is because in the past, we've been criticized for spending a million dollars on, say, like, learning stairs. That we've lost this trust with our community because we're not transparent. So why are we not being transparent when we, in the past, we were transparent? We got a list, I have it right here, of what we approved last year. So I guess as a board member, I'd like to see a list before we approve this budget. I don't know what the other board members feel about it, but that's what I would like to see before we approve the budget. And knowing that the budget doesn't have to be approved till the end of the month, there'd be plenty of time to have that conversation. So I would like to make a motion to move the budget approval to the next meeting and, so that we can see a list of what's included in the fund balance.
And please make the motion.
What's that?
Please make the motion.
I did, I just did.
You said you would like to.
I, I am making a motion to move the budget vote to June, whatever next week's meeting is. I'm sorry, let me look.
17th.
June 17th, so that we can review a list of what's included in the fund balance, which will be spent with the budget.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to reiterate, Director Frederiksen, that sitting in the Finance Committee meetings and learning and talking and understanding the budget better this year, it's become really clear to me that our enrollment's flat and our expenses are up. And I think overall that we can create a list if we, if we, I mean, we, I think you kind of just gave us a list in essence, but when your expenses are up, they're up. And so then we have to make hard decisions about how to move forward, which I assume will be our next conversation. But I appreciate your time and work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Frederiksen, I do have a question on the healthcare. Because I saw that expense go in. I know that their claims are higher. And we did try to control that by changing the healthcare provider and moving things around a little bit. Do you have any idea if this trend? Well, first of all, healthcare expenses are going up no matter what. But if this trend is going to escalate, have you heard anything from our broker or anything like that about what's going on with the healthcare services and healthcare insurance?
I can defer to Director Herman.
Vice Chair Frans, members of the board, we are actually in the minority on our trends. Over the last 11 years, we've been trending more at about a 4% rate. And all of the industry is between 12 and 15%. So we have been trending very well. That's a lot of credit to all of our staff that are on our insurance plan doing their part to try to keep our claims down and our insurance committee reapplicating for different measures, whether that's OMADA or different educational programs that they've been helping push through. So we've actually been trending very low in comparison to the industry standard. So it's always something that's on top of mind. And unfortunately, it can just take one or two claims that can really throw us off quite substantially, whether that's medical claims or prescription claims and something that our insurance provider helps us track very closely. So we, we have a very healthy fund balance right now, which is also very helpful when we're looking at our increases to make sure that we can rely on that if we need to, to help reduce too much of a substantial increase. But again, it could change on a dime if we have just one or two claims that really take us above, above a cap. But right now, we are, we are significantly low, the industry average.
Another question that I had was, and first of all, I personally appreciate moving things to the cloud because that makes us more resilient as far as not having things on-site in the case of an incident or maintaining the infrastructure. But I have noticed that we are continuing to see the end of life of some of our technology as well as the support systems not being included to have legacy equipment maintenance. Could you make a comment on anything you see there that you're projecting or that's part of this $950-something thousand?
I will try to channel my inner Director Malazo. There is always going to be a new and better technology. And technology is kind of obsolete within a couple of years of getting it. So we were always going to have needs. I think we are doing our best to be as efficient and not spend as money that actually we could try to patch things together. But at some point, you're going to have to replace old technology that just isn't working anymore. So we'll continue to try to include those in our budgets and, and do what we can to kind of mitigate whatever new expenses we're going to see. But it's always a risk.
Well, with the inflation rate of those, and it's not just with the technology, it's also with general equipment, et cetera. The inflation rate's been listed at over 12 to 13% when you go to replace based upon the net present value of those items from when we first purchased them. I'm assuming we're anticipating some of that in this budget and that's also some of the concern going forward.
Yes, so we do have the Apple leases for the iPads. So that's, one of them is the year two of a two-year lease. We have another one that's a four-year. This is year two of the four-year. Again, we're, when we can sell back to salvage, we're going to be doing that. We'll, we'll pursue E-rate whenever we can. So we'll continue to try to be as, as efficient and effective as we possibly can.
I appreciate that.
Director Frans, you bring up a really great point that has been, I've seen in the classroom and it seemed like, and you know, you, you mentioned this, Director Frederiksen, that, you know, two to three years ago, there was a huge push with COVID dollars to invest in technology in our district. And now unfortunately, we're seeing the repercussions that we have to replace, repair many of the things that were purchased with COVID dollars. And we're kind of suffering the consequences of that expense currently, whether it's smart boards not working or iPads or whatever. So yes, there is a trickle effect to investing heavily into a district in technology. And now we're seeing some of that in our budget. So I would agree with that.
I'm not seeing it because of COVID. This has nothing to do with COVID. It's general inflation right now with the cost of chips, the cost of technology, the cost of our pickup trucks that we use for maintenance, et cetera. All of that has shown, according to all the financial reports that I read on a regular basis, a 12 to 15% inflation, whereas the average inflation across all goods and services is somewhere about between 6 and 8%. So when we're dealing with issues with operating capital and capital items, we're hit even harder in that area, plus with our aging buildings. So we did what we could before, but it's just going to keep coming up. And I'm seeing that impact and the number that you mentioned with the list that has been talked about at the study sessions and what we're seeing in our actual financial reports. And it is concerning. It's very concerning because that's, we have no control over that. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have one more comment I'd like to make. You mentioned the inflation rate. And while I'm happy to see the nice increase in revenue in this year's budget of 6.7 million, or 6%, which is double the rate of inflation, thank you to the state of Minnesota for the historic funding. Thank you, local taxpayers, as we max-certified the levy. And thank you, our property values have continued to increase, creating additional revenue for our district. In fact, our combined revenue from 2013 to 2023 has exceeded inflation by 47%. Our per-people funding has grown from 8,903 to 12,389 from 2013 to 2023. But what also has grown at historic levels of our expenses, in fact, our expenses are projected to increase from 116 million to 100, I'm sorry, 121 million for the 24, 25 school year. That is an increase of 5.5% when inflation is 3.5%. For the over 1 million in deficit spending coming out of our fund balance again this year, why are not, why are we not being transparent with our community on what the one-time spend will be used for? So why do expenses continue to exceed revenue in a year with historic funding? The answer is simple: lack of fiscal responsibility. With declining enrollment, our district needs to be run more like a business and make some hard decisions on how to bring a balanced budget to our community and be accountable to our taxpayers. While the district did make some cuts this year and reallocated funding, I believe that this was just the icing on the cake, on what needs to be done to stop the deficit spending in this district. For our School Board Policy 702, Section 3, A1, for the second consecutive year, the pertinent language is this: "The school board shall review the projected revenues and expenditures for the school district for the next fiscal year and make such adjustments in the expenditure budget as necessary to carry out the educational program within the revenues projected." Thank you.
All right. This is a roll call. Oh, did you have something to say, Director Holstead?
No, I respectfully challenge that. I've got paperwork and lists and Excel sheets that I review on a daily basis, talking about our fiscal responsibility, not the lack thereof. So I just, I, I challenge that. And I think it's, quite frankly, insulting to our staff who have taken cuts and cuts and cuts. And there's more coming. And I'm, I'm shaking. It's, it's, angers me, to be honest, but I'll stop.
Yeah, I'd like to add a comment, too. I think we're going to sit in a few months, and we're going to hear our audit firm come. And that is hours and hours of work that our staff provides to our audit firm. And every year, I sit and listen to them. The story doesn't change. We live lean. I don't want to preface, he'll, he'll tell us what, what he sees. And he's actually a CPA. And what I would like to add to that, too, is the deficit spending that we're doing, I completely agree with it. It is for non-staff, non-certified staff. It is dollars that our community has built up over the years to help take care of the students that are in our buildings right now. And I have no problem spending that money on the kids in our buildings today. The difficulty will come is when we really do have to balance a budget, and we really do have to cut. And there will be children and families that suffer from that. And that will not be a fun day. So I'm happy to spend it. That's what the money's there for.
I appreciate all those challenges. I'm just saying, as our community is screaming loud and clear that we have, have, we have a year of historic funding. And like I stated, if you look at all the funds put together, no one can deny that our revenue has exceeded inflation by 47%. And so I, like I stated before, we as a district need to stop operating like a stool at school district, and we need to start operating like a business and make some of those hard decisions. And I guess, like I said, I, I do appreciate the cuts. I think that, you know, I, I think it's the icing on the top of the cake. When you have declining enrollment, are we have enrollment that's similar to where we were at in 2017? And we've pumped millions and millions of dollars into our district since 2017. How can we continue to operate with more funding with the same amount of students that we had in 2017? And that is my challenge.
So, so I, I accept what you're saying. I understand, I hear you. I think context matters, and we talk about that all the time up here. Mandates have changed greatly, needs of our students have changed greatly. The landscape has changed and shifted, hence increased expenses. We need to be fiscally responsible. The fiscally responsible, if we were a corporation, we would, you know, be paying out dividends. Well, let's, to me, those dividends are staying within our general, or our fund balance, that we have said we will. And, you know, giving that to our students today for the taxpayers paying today. So I respectfully hear you. But the landscape has changed as well. So I think context matters.
Yeah, and I agree. And I agree, funding has changed. I mean, there's funding tied to special ed, where we get additional funding if we have additional special needs kids. I think the challenge is, is that our staff has increased. Our admin has almost doubled since 2017. So why are we not making those hard decisions is the question that I'm asking.
There's no data to back up most of that right now. If anything, it's the opposite percentage.
I'd be happy to share that with you, Director Franz. So I-
Well, I, I would respectfully say that any state, country, or even service that's only running at a 3.5% inflation rate right now is one of fairy tales. That is not the case. The average inflation rate, as reported by the Wall Street Journal yesterday, was 6% to 8% across all industries, and some industries are more than others. So I, I have a hard time believing that 3.5% is the inflation rate. And furthermore, it is not backed up by data that we have exceeded the inflation rate by 47%.
I can share the presentation I received with you.
We are still working. Anybody can look at the Minnesota Department of Ed and see that this district has been lean for a long time. We really do spend $2,500 less per student overall than other districts.
And I would like to challenge that, because I've heard you say it multiple times at the, at the board table. In fact, I'll share it. I have more information to share when we get to the levy conversation, because our district is unique, and we cannot compare ourselves to Edina or Minnetonka. But if you've looked at the numbers from New Prague or Jordan, we educate for less than, or for more, more than those districts do. So we can get into that further. But I will share the presentation with you. I would be, I'll be happy to share my presentation with you. I don't think anybody can deny that, you know, our, that our per-people funding has grown, you were here for eight years, from 8,900 to 12,389 is, and that is a 47% increase.
I'm not even going to go there. Okay, let's, can we, are we ready for a vote? Okay. This is a roll call vote. We're going to start with Director Atkinson.
Nay.
Director Valeskas?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Holstead?
Aye.
An aye. So that passes 6-1. Thank you so much, Director Fredrickson, for all your time into this. And next, we will move on to the levy discussion. And this is a, this is just a discussion of the plan. So I'm going to hand this over to-
To me.
To Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. And if one of our staff could queue up the presentation up on the thing there, that'd be great. Is there a clicker, or could somebody drive it? If there's a remote clicker, I can click from here as well. Thank you, Director Fredrickson. So tonight, just want to share some information around the levy, conversations that we've been engaging in, and I think a good segue from the conversation that we were just having around the budget. And I think there's multiple points to be made and good discussion to be had as we consider what our financial future looks like. And I think there are priorities that we have as a district. As we've heard, many of our priorities have changed and grown over the years. And certainly, the landscape in education and finance has changed as well. And so we need to reflect that as we vision forward. So tonight, I'll go over an overview of where we're at with regards to the levy, talk a little bit about some of our survey themes, and some recommendation and impacts, give you a timeline, as well as general summary and open it up, chair to discussion. So, you know, like, we have many districts in the metro area that are experiencing the type of reality that we're discussing here tonight. We're, we're not alone, unfortunately, in this financial challenge. I believe in the seven-county metro area that comprises most of our AMSD, our Association of Metropolitan School districts, we are cutting upwards of 350-plus million collectively throughout all of the districts. And I, too, am very appreciative of our legislature for their hard work and dedication to put in countless hours of time at the Capitol to secure revenue necessary to operate our districts. And certainly, that was a, a real big challenge that they had before them. And we did receive revenue. And I think the challenge that many of our elected officials have been facing is trying to understand the disconnect between the news tagline of historic funding in the state of Minnesota and education, yet with, you know, 300-plus million dollars in reductions in AMSD districts. And so what, what is that about? And we do know that with the legislature, we had various bills that came through that came funded, and some came underfunded, and some came with no funds. And I think that's the biggest challenge, is really trying to get into the details of some of the bills that have financial tails to them, that districts are projecting what may or may not be the case. And, and again, until we experience some of the impacts of the bills, some of those true costs will be unknown. And I know that in our district specifically, one of our greatest challenges was trying to ensure that as the conversation that was just being had around inflation, our current operating levy is not tied to inflation. So the day that we passed this current operating levy, as inflation grew, it, it outpaced, you know, the impacts that it could actually deliver on to the dollar. So that is going to be a challenge with our current situation. We do spend our tax money wisely. You've heard just a little bit ago, we are very lean in a lot of different areas. And at a time, that was probably a, a great talking point, because we were experiencing robust growth and development in this district, and educating students with resources that were less than some of our neighboring districts. And so there was a point in time where that was probably a point of pride. And I would say that now, in today's world, and kind of the value of the dollar, I don't know if that's necessarily the most prideful, if we can look at what it takes to educate our kids in 2024 and guarantee the results that they all deserve. And so we strive for academic excellence. We expect academic excellence. And we know that academic excellence comes with a cost. Education doesn't happen for free. So that is, that is a conversation that we're going to have to have. And so we, we will remain, you know, stewards of, of resources, but we also need to be real with the resources that we have. As was mentioned, again, just a few minutes ago, yes, we did have to make some tough decisions. Not like any other business, we, we did make some cuts. And, and those are painful cuts. And, and so, you know, leaving four, or removing $4 million from our budget, and then to make up that last differential for this upcoming school year, using some of our fund balance to bring to the table, so that we didn't have to cut any deeper, because that was becoming increasingly challenging. And so that was a conversation that we brought to the board around that. And so we know that this, along with a lot of other factors, are leading up to the conversation that we need to have with the board and potentially with our community to understand the investment into our district for many years to come. And again, looking at the, the, some of these slides, I know that you have seen. But yes, our costs are increasing faster than our revenue. We have been seeing declining enrollment, you know, flat to declining enrollment over the many years. And, and that has a compounding impact. And, and so yes, we would love to make sure that we see the growth coming at our kindergarten, because when you grow at kindergarten, you have them for a long term versus pockets of various others. I mean, we'll take any growth, obviously. But we do know that in our district, that just the availability, if you should desire to move into our district, there's really not a lot of room. So in terms of our infrastructure around, we are fairly built out. And so our ability to grow in terms of sheer numbers of population, let alone having school-age kids in those households, are going to be experienced in, you know, our townships, et cetera, because Prior Lake doesn't have much land left. Savage is fairly built out as well. And so it is going to start looking to some of our townships that we support, where we're going to actually have true housing developments that would actually attract people. And then also, given the rising cost of everything, more and more of our younger families that would tend to have school-age kids are being priced out of the market. And just meeting with our wheelators, a couple of months ago, in Prior Lake, here at the district, you know, they were saying, you're not going to touch a single-family home in Prior Lake, in the city of Prior Lake, under $500,000. So the, the market is clearly accelerated. And yes, we do have high home values, and that attracts a certain buyer. And so when we're looking at housing rates, you know, kissing the 800-plus thousand for many of the new homes that are coming in, there's just not a lot of those starter homes that maybe we have seen in our lifetimes. Those typically aren't attracting families that have school-age kids. We are seeing far, far fewer folks like that coming in. Next slide. And with regards to the funding, as I shared, yes, lots of funding coming in, and lots of categorical funding that's coming in. So it can only be utilized for areas that the legislature has earmarked. And again, it's in areas that are needed, and then some areas that are yet to be understood and totally realizing the impact. One of the challenges that we've had around our current reality, again, is the lack of our current operating levy being tied to the inflation index. And so again, since 2003, had this current operating levy been tied to that, we would have had about $9 million just on that inflationary factor alone. So that was something that, you know, back then, we could have done. We, we did not do that. And that is a significant cost to us today of not having that revenue generated into our district, something to consider for the future. And budget reductions are our reality. It's actually part of our history for many, many years. This isn't the first time that this board and this community and administration has been at the table together to have conversations around reductions. I've heard many stories of the two years that I've been here of significant cuts made over the years, in multiple years. So that's not unheard of. And I think we're at that place today. The, the cuts that we had to make this year, as we forecast what our expenses will be with a variety of factors, yeah, we can anticipate that we're going to have to make some cuts. And then we have to be honest with ourselves and our community that making cuts ultimately impacts our students' ability to engage in high-quality academics. And so we'll have to make concessions along the way. And in the business world, concessions come very differently than in the public sector world, because, you know, our product, our business product is our people. That's about 80% of who we are in terms of our business. That is the business model of public education, wherever you go, pretty much. And whereas a for-profit company might make a significant reduction in a department or a division, that workflow is still driving their profit margins. And that oftentimes is redistributed around staff who are remaining. And likely, the for-profit world has the ability to potentially bring some stipends or some incentives to those who are taking on that extra work. And so we don't have that luxury to be able to do that. So some nuances in the private sector compared to the public sector, I would say, much more rigid or fixed in the public compared to some levels of flexibility and creativity that can be exercised in the, in the business world. that can be exercised in the, in the business world. But cuts are not new to us, is what I'm saying. And we are committed to ensuring that we are being mindful of the reductions that we may need to make and make them as smart as we possibly can to keep them as far away from our students as much as we possibly can. And so since two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, we have been utilizing our fund balance to ensure that we are able to bring forth a budget that allows for us to be able to offer competitive programming to ensure that we are giving our students what they need. And as you all know, in this path, this, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we've made a reduction of four million and taken an additional million from our fund balance to support the services throughout our district totaling to date about six million being used from our fund balance. And I would say, keep in mind as well that that fund balance was ballooned during COVID. So that's another aspect that we have those resources that came through Fed, a lot of that through federal funds, through Esser monies that went now went back into that fund balance for usage. And so that is something I just want to keep the board and our community abreast of as well. I know that predates me, but it's just part of our current reality that, that carries over from the past. And we do have to balance, you know, our costs with our efficiency and what our students demand for their success in, in life. And this is something that, again, a point of pride where we're educating our kids at about twenty-five hundred dollars less than the state average and what, and what many districts might be experiencing for their students. And again, that's a conversation that I think that we have to have with regards to what would it look like if we had an additional twenty-five hundred dollars at our disposal to support student outcomes? Again, more of a rhetorical question for the board, we're not asking for that, but it's just something that put into perspective about what we see across the state averages. And how we spend our money, Treasurer Burnick spoke to this a little bit ago about what we see with our audits and we've seen this for years and we have, you know, certificates and awards for our stewardship around our, our resources that gets recognized every year at our audit. And as I stated, about eighty cents of every dollar goes towards salaries, benefits and supplies that support those staff that are directly impacting our students each and every day. About twelve cents of every dollar goes towards our purchase services, you know, transportation costs, contracts, vendors, agreements. As you heard earlier tonight, too, from Director Frederson, about five cents goes to our capital expenditure, maintaining brick and mortar and improvements throughout our district. And then lastly, about three percent is our DSC administration as well as our head principals. So extremely lean once, the farther you get away from the student impact. And that is something that I think we're very proud about here in our district. Like, we don't carry a heavy administrative overload or overhead comparative to some other places as well. So being very fiscally sound. And we partnered with Morris Leatherman. As you all know, we've shared this report with you. And through that report, we asked our community essentially kind of what their tax tolerance is and also if we were to raise taxes, what, what purpose would you support? And what would you like to see in return with regards to that? And these are the nine themes that came out of that conversation, you know, with Morris Leatherman. And so top of mind, safety and security, we know that that's a significant aspect. We have very safe schools in Prior Lake Savage Area School District. And when asked, our community says, we would support even safer schools. And so again, we know if students don't feel safe and connected into their learning environments, they're not going to be able to concentrate and stay focused on learning. And then a variety of others that kind of can get merged together, but around, you know, academic, you know, excellence. And, and that is expanded career pathways, maintaining effective class sizes, as well as that personalized approach to understanding how does this learner's needs differ from this learner's needs and so forth. And so, you know, our taxpayers want to see something in return if we're going to have that conversation. We also saw some parallels with regards to what we saw on this previous slide around what we heard from our community centered around that student experience in our strategic planning feedback sessions throughout the community. Again, high focus on academics, high focus on our kids having critical thinking skills, career readiness skills, a variety of programming to meet those unique learning needs and that strong sense of character. So when the kids graduate from our district that they are positive contributing citizens to our community and to the world. And so that is some parallels that we also heard from our community outside of that Morris Leatherman survey. So when we've talked about population and, and birth rates, this is very real. You know, this is, this is not something that's fictitious or projections. Our demographers have been very spot on with regards to their ability to project enrollment in a variety of different districts across, you know, the Twin Cities area. And one thing, sorry, one thing that I'll just point out is if you take a look at that two thousand and six, seven timeframe, that, as you can see in this bar graph, was the peak of a lot of babies being born. And these are next year's seniors. So we are in that timeframe right now where we are cresting with regards to our highest enrollment and you can see how it goes down from there. So what we're seeing with regards to our enrollment almost mirrors what we see from the state demographers. And so I just wanted to give mention to that because that's kind of a challenging phenomenon that we're going to have to contend with when we're sitting next year with our largest class and then declining with every projected birth year subsequently, almost to a T. And so when we take a look at how we're being resourced with regards to our voter approved operating levy, you can see a variety of different districts, you know, in our area and in the metro as well and kind of where we fall in that continuum. So sitting at about six hundred and twenty-four dollars per student, that's not tied to inflation. And that is our current reality with regards to our voter approved levy. In the next slide, you'll see not only just our voter approved levy, but our, our local operating levy as well as any capital and tech project levies that districts may have on top of those base operating levies. And so just again, for comparison, you can see where we fall with the yellow highlight compared to a variety of different districts here in the Twin Cities. And so it comes to the point where we have to ask ourselves, what is sustainable financially compared to where we're currently at and where we would perhaps like to have some conversation? And so you saw this earlier in the year, about mid-year, when we're having conversations around statutory operating debt with regards to our current state. And I know it's a little hard to distinguish, but if you take a look at these scenarios, these are on various scenarios of financial cuts. And you have cuts, cut scores, if you will. And then you have the dashed line, which is the floor of our policy of our fund balance. And if we continue on the trajectory that we're currently on, meaning we do not do anything, we just ride this out, expecting that we'll have more enrollment as our sore, sole source of income, you can see that by fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we are going to be in a real challenging spot and are risking our statutory operating debt and, and takeover. If we also renew what we currently have, that gets us slightly further into that fiscal year. But again, you can see almost exactly the same outcome in terms of timeline and impact of renewing what we currently have, which is a six twenty-four, not tied to inflation. When we look at some other dollar amounts, it, from the Morris Leatherman survey, the thirty dollar amount, thirty dollar a month was where Morris Leatherman survey was saying that might be close to the top of where you might be able to go with some, any statistical support. That you can see that by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, at that thirty dollar a month, where we would be financially in terms of our fund balance and needing to have some conversation about some significant changes. And I would also say at that thirty dollar a month, going back to that slide of the nine or so things that the community would like to see in return, there's very little, if anything, that we would be able to do. So essentially asking the community if you would support us increasing your, your taxes by thirty dollars a month on a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar average house without being able to guarantee anything in return. And that's the challenge that that brings. I would say that bringing to the green line, which is our statutory cap that we could potentially ask our community. And clearly you can see at sixty dollars a month, again, on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar median home value, that would clearly net us revenue to do a lot of things on behalf of our students. But we also know that the likelihood of that kind of a ask and conversation with our community is not going to happen. That's not being realistic with ourselves or our community. And so again, we come back down then to a conversation around forty-five, which I'm fully aware that that goes above the threshold of where we are having some conversation with Morris Leatherman, where that starts to diminish the higher you go. But it allows us, as you can see, time to actually make some critical investments into our infrastructure, which then ultimately improves outcomes for our students, which then serves as an attractant for neighboring districts or folks who are in other learning environments to come back and say, we'd like to be a part of that conversation, a part of that winning team. And it also gives us the revenue for a period of time versus going under in the same timeframe with regards to our fund balance. So the conversation that we are bringing forward in terms of our proposal from an administration side is a combination of our current reality, what's realistic and what can we actually deliver some outcomes on that the community would like to see in return for that ask and that conversation? We know that without additional revenue, we are going to have some real, real tough and painful conversations. And so essentially, not having the conversation says to me that you are desiring a conversation around these types of things. If we are to make, if we don't increase our revenue, we know this year was about five million dollars. And so factor in, you know, inflation and other items, we're looking at a good six million dollars plus that we're going to have to have conversations about reducing next year. And that's not just tinkering around the edges. Those are deep, deep cuts. And so for us, you know, without additional revenue, we do need to have a conversation about which schools are we going to talk about closing? What type of staff reductions are we going to accept, which ultimately leads to increased class sizes and also increased programmatic support for our students? Because again, our people are the product for our students. And so we'd also have to look at some specialized programming as well. So one of the aspects that we might need to have conversations about is the MINT caps. Is that something that we would have to reconsider because we're paying for a leased facility currently? Is there something, if we happen to close a school, would MINT caps be able to go into that school? But we also know that's a deep partnership that we have with another district to our south. And so the further we move that into our district compared to where it's currently resides in Lakeville, the likelihood of that partnership continuing in the future starts to diminish because we are increasing travel time now for students. And with fixed core class schedules at the high school, we, students may not be able to make that additional fifteen minute drive from Lakeville to Prior Lake, for example. So we would see some decline potentially in participation, which also is helping offset the cost of running MINT caps. And so we would bear that burden on, of that cost. Maintaining two competitive pools is extremely costly. I think that's a conversation that we would have to have with regards to, do we maintain just one? And then a lot of other programmatic components that we would have to discuss, particularly looking at the immersion pathway. Is that something that we can continually afford to do K-12? Or is that something that we'd have to scale back to a narrower grade band? You know, MINT caps outside of location, do we maintain the same amount of, of career pathways or do we have to reduce those? Middle school activities are something that we know middle schoolers need a lot of opportunity to engage and learn about themselves academically as well as through a lot of the activities that are offered to them. That might be something that we're going to have to have some conversation on. The online component is, do we, do we look at an alternative to online and partner with collaborative district to, to take that on? And then the electives perhaps at the, at the high school, which we've already condensed down significantly to the cheapest schedule that we can run at the high school. And I don't think there's a high school teacher here that would say that the current model of the six period day is the, the best for instruction. And I think many of you who have lived through that could probably attest to that as well. And so we would have to eliminate even more, which again, as you eliminate electives, kids have to go somewhere. Where do we put those students? And so does that impact our class sizes? We did talk a little bit about some technology as well. So again, when we're looking at six plus million dollars, it's, it's, it's deep cuts. So do we remove, you know, the, the one-to-one, isolate that to the secondary experience? Again, looking at some of the, the technologies for our staff. And then lastly, some of our facility usage fees. And are there ways that we can increase fees to offset the revenue that we would be reducing in some of the cuts that we would need to make? So again, having the conversation around the levy is one thing. Not having that conversation, we know, is going to be another conversation that we're going to have to have. It's going to be a different conversation that we're going to have to have and it will be a painful conversation. But nonetheless, ultimately, something in this, in this range is going to be something that we'll have to engage on. And so our conversation with the board tonight and just kind of presenting this to you is that our proposal would be to ask our voters to revoke the current operating levy of about six hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil and replace it with a new levy of about eighteen hundred dollars per pupil to net, or to, to gross about ten point eight million for the next ten years. And that would be tied to inflation. And so that inflationary index would vary from year to year as well. But that would be our first year and then, you know, move with inflation. And this is premised on about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. And anything above, obviously, would be more than forty-five dollars a month. Anything below would be less than forty-five dollars a month. And, you know, in conversations that I've been having, you know, one of the things I've been talking about with some of our small, you know, groups and some of our community groups as well, is that forty-five dollars is the equivalent of about three pizzas. And I want to be very upfront. As one parent at, at a homeowners association said, where do I go? Tell me, where do I send my check? And I know that there are families who are saying forty-five dollars is going to break our family's budget and everything in between. So this is a, a real conversation and a very serious conversation that we're having. We don't take this lightly as an administrative team and it's not one that we present lightly to you as the board. But this is what we're bringing forth in terms of a discussion with the board. And if this is something that the board would support bringing to our community by way of a ballot measure in November, one of the things that we are premising this on is that our ability to maintain what we have and to build on aspects of what we have. Our number one goal is to enhance, enhance the academic performance and outcomes of our students. We know there's significant work to be done there and that many districts are grappling with this. Our state is grappling with this. And so when we talk about some of these legislative mandates, you saw the big push for REACT and that REACT is coming underfunded based upon what we are projecting, what we would need to really bolster that. I anticipate we're going to have the same kind of academic war on math. And with the new science standards coming, we're going to see it there. And you can see the correlation between math and science. And so we know that those standards are coming and we know based upon history, they're going to come unfunded, underfunded. So we have to be prepared for that. So we can expect that, something along those lines. So how do we maintain effective class sizes so our staff aren't underwater to get that personalized experience with regards to what our students need? We really want to focus in on that personalized support. Some years ago, we used to have specialists within our schools that would be split between campuses at the elementary level for kids who are really enriched in their learning and needed that acceleration. And we still had support for kids who were really struggling with a variety of things through a five oh four or special education. And then the, the media, the, the, the majority of our learners who are kind of right there in the middle. So that is something we really want to make sure that we protect and ensure that we make investments in that. and ensure that we make investments in that, uh, increased personalized supports. Um, and, uh, we need to ensure that our staff are bringing their best to the classrooms every single day. And that doesn't just happen by happenstance or osmosis. Like our students, our staff are very intentional about the investments that we need to make in them. You heard Brandy earlier tonight about our Q comp and where a student or a staff member might be struggling. That might be a month-long investment, that might be a year-long investment. But we know making that investment in our staff pays dividends on their ability to be the best teacher before our students or best support staff, you know, before our students every single day. And we want to make sure that, uh, we are centering on that whole student aspect. Our bread and butter is academics, we know that. We are not gonna shy away from that, that's the core of what we do. But we also know that students, no matter how great of a lesson plan or how high the rigor and standards are in our classrooms, if they're, if they are not feeling safe, secure, connected, loved, supported, you know, you name it, in our classrooms, they're not gonna plug and play. And they will have every excuse to not be on academic task because all these other aspects need to be addressed. And not that we're turning our schools into clinics, I wanna be very clear about that. Um, but we do need to ensure that, you know, if a student needs some, um, food support, some mental health support, um, so friendship groups, learning how to, uh, increase your social skills, that's something that many of our school counselors and psychologists, um, can, uh, uh, manage and bring supports, if not in the daytime, um, connecting them into, uh, third-party partnerships as well that can be supported by the families. The expanded learning pathways is one of our biggest draws and our fastest-growing interest, um, of our students. And I will tell you, last summer, when we kicked off our, um, regional mayors and superintendent meeting, um, every district at the table talked about either how that program is growing or starting that program because our work industry is demanding workers yesterday. So we are going to have a large portion of our students taking very traditional college pathway tracks, either four-year or two-year. But we are seeing a growing number of our students who are going straight into the work industries with certifications and/or delaying college because they're working to save for some college, et cetera. So that's something that we wanna make sure that we protect. Should we be able to have the conversation and get the support, um, from our community around some critical investments there, um, uh, in min caps as well as our dual immersion? And again, we've heard lots of feedback through our programmatic review around our dual immersion and some of the opportunities that our families are desiring, strongly desiring within that pathway, um, that immersion pathway and allowing our kids to truly graduate bilingual, take on the bilingual seals, um, assessment, um, and go off to their next best thing once they leave. And then lastly, as, uh, we saw on the Morris Leatherman, our families are wanting to ensure that our, um, learning environments are safe. And, um, we do a lot, uh, that is not something we take lightly in this district. You all have heard me say it and I will continue to say it. Um, ensuring that our students are safe is, is, is paramount. So again, some perimeter enhancements, um, enhancing the cameras and surveillance systems within our, our schools, particularly at the secondary level. Um, looking at, uh, the entry, the student, um, entry portion of the Prior Lake High School as well as retrofitting classroom doors with automatic locking mechanisms, um, kind of outlining, uh, what we saw in, in some of our, uh, um, federal, um, safety protocols through that recent audit. Um, another aspect that I think is critically important, and we've talked about this too as a, as an administration team and we've done some of this, um, with the FLEP committee, um, in, to a certain extent, particularly around the brick and mortar. But, um, should this be a conversation that, um, the board supports bringing to the community and that is supported by the community? We want to ensure that there are strong oversight over every penny that is being spent. Um, that would come by way of a potential, uh, levy. So that is something that we would also stand up and that would be similar to what we have in many of our other standing committees where we have, uh, parent community participation as well as, um, um, staff participation. But again, the process would be, the referendum oversight committee would be looking specifically at the levy. Any changes to that, um, proposal would be something that would have to first go through them. That, um, recommendation or changes then would go to the finance committee and that ultimately would leave the finance committee and come to the board. So we're adding a layer of accountability into this because this is something, again, that we don't take lightly and that we wanna be great stewards of accountability around every penny that's being spent as we did my very first year here with a lot of investment around, um, finance infrastructure um, with, uh, Director Fredrickson and her entire team. So in terms of what our, um, next steps look like, this is a conversation that, um, we are bringing to the board, um, tonight. Um, getting your feedback and, and perspectives. Would also be bringing this back to the board next Monday. And then ultimately, um, our final recommendation, based upon the feedback that we gather along the way, to our board in July, um, that you would, uh, be presented a proposal, um, to take action. And that if this is something that the, uh, board would support bringing to our community in terms of the conversation, ultimately to a ballot, um, we would have to have, uh, a deadline to adopt a resolution, um, to call for such, uh, a ballot measure, um, by October twen- or by August twenty-third, um, culminating in Election Day, November fifth of twenty twenty-four, that ultimately our community would make that decision. So in summary, uh, you know, the conversation that we bring before you tonight um, is to revoke and, um, uh, up, uh, stand up a, a new levy um, that is at a threshold that we can actually deliver something in return to our, our, uh, community um, to, uh, gross about ten point eight million dollars a year. Um, and that's based on about forty-five dollars a month on a four hundred and fifty thousand average household. Um, maintaining, um, the quality of program that we have today that we are being successful with and that we are seeing growth and interest in. Strengthen, um, the safety and security measures within our district. Increasing that holistic support for our kids academ- academically as well as socially and emotionally. Um, and, uh, to really capitalize on that expanded learning pathway, um, options for our, our kids resulting in, uh, improved academic performance and outcomes for our kids. So I just bring that forward to the board. And, uh, I turn it back over to you, Chair Franz, and our team stands ready for, uh, any discussion.
Okay, so there's no vote, uh, on this tonight, but it is meant to be a discussion in preparation for our next study session as well as our final vote in July. So I'm opening the floor up to questions from all board members.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I apologize, um, well, it's one thirty-five in my board packet page number. It's the without additional levy dollars slide, um, if you wanna bring that up again. Um, the, couple of things on here, the staff contract freezes. How does, how does that work considering we have union contracts and like, are there stipulations built into those contracts?
This is something that we enacted at, at points of the past. And, um, Tammy, do you wanna speak to that? Or, I'm sorry, Emily, do you wanna speak to that?
Director Olsted, that would be a part of the negotiations process. So, um, all of that would be negotiated with all of our bargaining units and then all of our non-affiliated contracts would be, um, the parameters that would be set by the board that we would have to negotiate at that time.
So the next time all of these come around is when those conversations would happen?
The conversations would happen ever at-
Sorry, the next time the contracts come up for renewal or that's when these conversations would happen?
Director Olsted, for every time we go into contract negotiations, we'd have to have those conversations with where we're at at that time. Um, and depending on, on the financial situation and the parameters that were given to us, that would be what we would go forward with negotiating around.
And then what does it, what does a freeze, like the term freeze, what does that mean?
I don't recall the exact year that it occurred. I think it was either twelve or fourteen years ago. But the freeze is not just, uh, a zero percent on a salary, but it also freezes steps. So there's no step movement as well.
Okay. Um, thank you. The, under program reductions where it says eliminate one min caps pathway, realizing it's TBD, of course, all of this is. Does that mean we eliminate the, the involvement of Prior Lake Savage students? Or how, because it's a, it's a combination of different districts. So how do we eliminate a pathway?
Yeah, so, and, and again, I just wanna preface, none of this is set in stone. These are just things that we believe would get to the dollar threshold that we know we would have to engage in conversation. And so a multitude of things. The, the min caps would be something around both our location, that we potentially could save lease. Um, and then around pathway, uh, to eliminate a pathway, for example. Um, that would be the entire pathway. So that would be potentially impactful for both the partnering district students as well as our district students. That, a, a specific pathway, uh, we may not have resources to be able to afford that pathway. So that would be eliminated. So it would, it would impact both participating districts.
Okay. And then on the flip side of that, you know, if a proposed levy is approved, again, I know all TBD at this point, but under the expand student learning pathways where it says expand min caps career pathways, does that mean a, an additional pathway? Or we accept more students into the program? Is that what expansion means or both?
It would be a combination of a couple of factors. It would potentially be the expansion of enrollment because the demand is very high, um, for, for that. Our current location, we've reached our capacity. And so our ability to expand would also be predicated on looking at an alternate site, um, do, like, uh, uh, an additional site. And I also would say that, um, we have been in conversations with, um, um, other districts who have an interest in partnering with us. And, um, there would be potentially another partner at the table based upon our ability to grow and expand that. So, so again, a lot of unknowns, but these are conversations that are just in a holding formation right now, pending, you know, what our future looks like. Uh, we, but right now, we don't, is, even with the interest of a partner, additional partner, we don't have the resources to be able to, to engage in that partnership.
Thank you.
You can just speak out.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Um, back on that same page, without additional levy dollars, the technology reductions, um, the bullet points, remove iPads grade K through five. Uh, just in conversations in the community, um, I've actually heard that, uh, first bullet point, removing iPads in gr- in grades K through five as a desire, not only from parents but also from, um, staff. And so, uh, my question is, uh, we're looking at this without additional levy dollars, but I'm wondering, um, what it might look like, uh, for this to be a reduction, um, regardless?
Vice Chair Bullion, um, certainly, any of these with or without could be conversations regardless. Um, and I would say, just a little foreshadow to, um, uh, some potential conversations in the future. Yeah, that, that is, if this is something that, um, the board has interest in, in exploring, this is definitely a conversation, um, levy or no levy that we could engage in. But this is something that we have considered. Um, and obviously with that consideration, i- it's not necessarily predicated to solely be tied to a levy outcome.
And just to expand a little bit on that, on that question, our line of question is, um, have we looked at, even preliminarily, uh, what that reduction of removing iPads from the K through five, what that, um, cost reduction would be?
Uh, some of these items, we have costed out. Um, they're very projected costs. But yes, we have looked at some of them. I don't have the cost tonight. We were just talking conceptual programmatic impact, um, tonight. Uh, but we, we have explored what that could look like.
And then lastly, in that, in that technology reductions category, removing staff desktop computers, can you tell, that sounds not-
Yeah, so whereas-
That sounds like the staff wouldn't like that. Like, can you tell me more about that?
I think there's probably a lot here that the staff wouldn't like.
But the staff desktop computers-
And so I think going, moving back to just that, cause staff have both a laptop and a, and a desktop. So if they're mobile, they can take that with them where they need to go. So we could eliminate, you know, one of those.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And obviously being mobile is better than being stationary.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was all the questions I had.
Yeah, so I have a question about, um, the, the proposal of the forty-five dollars per month, um, or five hundred and forty dollars per year for a home of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, the question is to revoke the district's existing operating levy and replace with a new levy? Is it two separate questions? Is that what's going to be proposed or one question?
Yeah, this is just one question that we are bringing forward to the board for conversation.
And ultimately, that's what we would ask of the voters as well to-
That, that would be our recommendation at this time is there would be a single question, um, for an overall operational, um, levy. And, uh, again, at the average of home price of four fifty, premised on that.
Perfect. Yeah, I, uh, was a little concerned just for a brief moment. Gave me pause where it looked like it was two separate questions. Revoke and then also separately approve a, a different dollar amount. Um, cause revoking would put us in a much worse situation where I think the expression you, you use is we would definitely be breaking bones in terms of how we would have to adjust operation. So given that the state demographer has shown that population in the state, population in the county and the area has crested, we've, we've plateaued, I would probably posit to say that we should still look at some of these different proposals with respect to reducing staffing, adjusting our programming, to make sure that our operation is balanced with the student population we have and what those needs are gonna look like as we move forward, recognizing that by twenty twenty-seven, we're not gonna see any of these larger class sizes.
Correct. And, and I would say, Director Velazquez, uh, that point is very well taken. And so that goes into this notion of being stewards with the resources. So, you know, if, if we know that, like, this, this year is living proof of that. We knew we had to make some reductions. And we made some really tough decisions. And those are challenging to make. And, and we will continue to make those types of decisions moving forward with or without additional revenue. Um, you know, if our, i- i- if, if you all support bringing this conversation to the community and the community ultimately supports it, staff have heard me kind of jokingly say, this is not winning the lottery. You know, this is still being very mindful of every penny coming into this district from our community and the return that we have to provide to the community. So whether it's by way of our students and how they perform, I keep saying our students, but I know you've graduated. But play the role. But our students and/or our, our adult community as well. I mean, this is, the school systems are a value add, um, on a, a continuum of our folks throughout our community. Um, and even if I don't participate in community education or anything like that, I know that this is a, um, a, a cushion for my home value as well. Strong schools equals s- strong communities. Um, and so there is unintended positive byproducts that come by way of a strong school system, whether you have kids in the district or not or whether you participate in community education program, if you're an adult or not. Um, it's an anchor and it can be a great anchor for a community. So we need to be mindful of that. Director Velazquez, that, um, what we experienced today, there are going to be continued conversations, um, that we're gonna ultimately have to have to ensure that we're being stewards. And that might be, if, if a certain program isn't getting the outcomes or the results that we desire for our kids, um, it might be the legacy program that, you know, I've taught for all my thirty years or it's the program that I've hosted for the past thirty years. And we might have to say, that's not something that we're gonna be able to continue because it's not getting the return. And if we're going to maximize, you know, our resources, um, to allow for the best outcomes for our kids in our community, we're gonna have to do those prioritizations continually. And I think that's just an annual conversation that we have anyways, um, in our current reality or any future reality.
Good, thank you. I don't have any additional questions.
I think Director Velazquez, you bring up a really great point. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I've looked at numbers back in two thousand seventeen when we did have the referendum pass and our district was projected to be around ten thousand students. And so knowing that that's, um, the case, you know, looking at that list of, um, possible, you know, possible changes, whether it's iPads or whatever, and I would agree with Director Bullion, um, I was in a finance meeting once and a lot of these things actually came up as suggested, um, reductions, um, by our community members. And- And so, you know, yes, do we have room at our high school where we could move min caps program to? Where I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we're paying $60,000 a month for the lease, is that correct?
I think it's less, is it about, is it about there or is it less? The lease at the min cap size? Thirty-five, thirty-eight?
Oh, is it thirty, okay, I saw, maybe I, I thought I saw two charges on the check register for $26,000 in the same month. So I, I, if it's 26 one time, then that would make sense. So, but again, do we have room in our high school to? And then if iPads aren't effective, are we, you know, should we be making those changes? For me, I think it's all about a timing issue and gaining the trust of our community so that they do support this levy. And one of the things that I question is if we spent $26,000 on this Morris Leatherman survey and the data clearly showed that only eight percent would support a $45 ask, how can we stand behind this with confidence? And, and, and I, you know, I think it's, and then also how much money are we going to spend to market this levy?
So I would, Director Atkinson, I think you bring up really good points. And I think that's the real challenge is that asking for, I'll, I'll speak for myself as the superintendent. I pride myself in being very open, very transparent and holding high integrity for the work that we do. And it's hard for me to envision asking a question to our community to say, would you go to the polls and support increasing your taxes if I can't guarantee something in return by way of what they've asked to see in return? It's quite disingenuous, I would call it that, for me to make such a request or to make such an offer to the board for you to consider. I would be disingenuous to this board. And so I want to be very clear to your question, to your comment. And as I shared earlier, going through the scenarios, I acknowledge you're absolutely right. We all saw the same survey, right? I, I know exactly what that looks like, that diminishing support. But the support nonetheless comes with expectations. And so how do you balance the expectations? And so, you know, we also could say the greatest support on that Morris Leatherman survey was nothing. No increase, but you want nine things for free. I mean, they're not saying that, I'm being a little facetious, but you understand the challenge here. And I think our community needs to understand that challenge and kind of wrestle with that a little bit as well. Because if we're going to go forward and bring a question to the ballot in November, my recommendation as your superintendent is that it actually has the potential to deliver a return that our community would like to see. Not one that is raise my taxes and don't give me anything in return. I don't know how we could ethically go to the polls like that. So I appreciate that and I don't disagree.
And I think part of the challenge is, is that we have, we have brought additional funding to our district. We max certified the levy. The other thing that I think we need to consider as a board is that something that's unique to our district, I don't know if it's super new, unique, or if it's across the state, but within our district, our property values in 2022 have increased by almost 30%. And so when I looked at my tax statement and I pulled it out and my taxes on my primary property have gone up by $743 a year from 2022 to 2024. That is the $61 a month, which is honestly, it's four pizzas. And so we've, we're already getting that revenue from our district in the additional.
A portion of that, the, the total property tax.
No, I looked at, I looked, no, no, I looked at just the school district. I think anybody can pull up their tax statement and see exactly how much that is.
Sure.
There's two lines, there's one that says, well, there is three, yes, they're correct. And I wrote them down and they say, one says voter approved and one says, I have the exact language. District voter levies is one dollar amount and then school district other levies. And that I believe is the one we just approved, we max certifies that. So, you know, I think, you know, our community, yes, they're very tax sensitive because, because of a lot of different factors. And they're, they are unique to our community. I think we have to pay attention to the Morris Leatherman survey. I think it, you know, they do that for a reason. They're, they're professionals and they're going around the state doing that type of thing.
And, and Director Atkinson, again, no disagreement. I, I would just also add that we know what, we know what doing nothing and extending what we have does for us. We, we know that reality too.
Except for we could make some cuts that are on the list.
That's what I'm saying. We know what that reality looks like. And, and so that, that's something that we will have to contend with. But again.
Right, and then also the fact that this doesn't expire until 28, correct? So, I mean, personally, before our next meeting, I'd like to see an update of the projected revenue and expenses this form. I don't know what point in time you gave it to us, but I could shoot it back to you. But I'm just looking at it right here and the revenue and the expenses for '25 are different than what we have in our budget currently. So I would like to see an updated projection with the different scenarios. I think that would be helpful for our board to be able to make a really great decision. I also think the thing we have to remember is that inflation is going to be on the ballot this fall. It's, it's a hot topic. And so, I, I mean, I'm personally, I'm fully for supporting our schools and doing what we can to support our teachers with what they need and students so they can achieve. But as we all know, that throwing money at a school district does not necessarily have an impact on proficiency rates. And we're seeing that across the state. And I would just say that I think it's a matter of timing. And with a year of historic funding, inflation, declining enrollment, and honestly, a lack of support and satisfaction from not only our staff, but also our parents, which is reflected on our annual stakeholder survey, I believe we need to take the time to implement a new strategic plan which represents what's important to our community. With the most important theme being academic achievement, which can be achieved without making major investments in our district, what needs to happen is a major change in focus from what we've been doing for the past four years. With, whether it's equity inclusion or social emotional learning, there needs to be a true focus on academic achievement for all students. And at that point, we will earn the respect and the trust from our taxpayers. And I know that they will become and they will vote for a levy to support our district.
So I'd like to build upon some of the things that you were touching on, most importantly, your tax statement. And I would encourage the entire community to go out to their county, it's super simple, pull it up. And you like to go back and talk about 2014, for example, okay? So I can only speak of my own, I don't speak about other people's taxes or other, how the teachers feel. But what I would say is in 2014, my personal property, because I lived here, my school district portion for my taxes was $2,266. In 2024, it's $2,486. So that's a change of $220 over the course of 10 years. Okay, school district levies, max and levies, all that. The city portion went up $316 and the county portion went up $220. Those are two things that the city and the county do not have to go to the community and ask for money for. Roads are important, police are important, oh, that's important. We are in a unique position just on how we fund our schools. And that we do have to ask our community where they want their money spent. So I personally think it would be unfair not to ask the community. I would feel unfair as a board member to not say to families that have eight-year-olds out there that have 10 years to look at and say, I'm going to take a child from eight to 18. What do I want that 10-year period to look like? And I would never assume the results of a survey solely based upon a lot of the respondents, which I can't remember the data, Kristy might help me, were empty nesters. I think it was a really big percentage from what I recall. So that would be a person like myself. And maybe I don't want to raise my taxes now. So I personally, as a school board member, I'm still talking, thank you, would feel that we have to ask our community. And for me to judge, oh, it's a bad year or it's an inflation year or whatever, I think it's irresponsible. And I know that we will still have to continue to look at cuts and spend our money wisely. And as far as transparency goes, we have a dashboard that we spent quite a bit of money on. And this data has been available this entire year. So we can sit and pick, pick, pick. But what I would say is I think it's really important to ask the community. And I would tell the community as well, make sure who you're listening to. Because sometimes you just kind of have to know your audience. And if they don't have a kid in our district, is their data accurate? So for me, I think everyone should go and look at their taxes. Because my school portion has gone up $220 in 10 years, that's a pretty good value personally. But just my opinion.
Well, and I think it's fair to note that we, as a, as a board, we would not have to make that decision. I agree, any tax levy that we, that we support, you know, the legislature passed a law saying that school boards have the right to approve a levy for the next 10 years. But that doesn't have to be done until we get closer to the expiration date. And I can tell you, there are other districts, right now very large districts, that get very large amounts of money from their taxpayers who are forced to make that decision because they know that that levy will not pass again. And I know that for a fact. And so, you know, so we're, we're fortunate that we have some time on our hands. And, and honestly speaking, I mean, like I said, I think it's a matter of timing. And I would also encourage everybody to go out and look at their tax statements because mine looks very different than yours.
So. Are there any other statements?
All right, so the levy scenarios, we've known for a while. We also knew that the enrollment projections on the first one, on the, on the referendum that did pass were wrong. It did conflict with the demographic report. But furthermore, not putting the inflationary factor has actually contributed to today. So as far as I'm concerned, anything that we do would have to have an inflationary factor in it in order to make sure that we actually tread water at a minimum. The other thing is, is I just want to say that Minnesota ranks 50 out of all 50 states in STEM, mostly because we don't fund technology at all grade levels. And iPads are not the best for students, I'm not going to deny that. But there's a reason why we rank 50 out of 50. And other districts that do have tech levies and other operating levies do have programming classes in fourth and fifth grade for their students and do excel. And it does reflect greatly in their math and science scores. So I just want to add that too because I'm, I'm hearing some talk and, and I get it. We're trying to limit the gaming mentality and things like that of technology. But from my perspective, heck, my kids had programming in fifth grade. I, I took four TRAN as a freshman. And I am, it's, it hurts me when I go to other states and go to other school districts in other states that their, their states do fund that. They do fund the science, they do fund the tech ed, they do fund the hands-on experiential learning. Our state does not, and we're trying to do that for our students and I think we should. Furthermore, I just want to say that as far as throwing money at a school district, I personally was offended by that statement. There are school districts that are renewing their current levy, but they also had levies going forward, very strong ones, as you can see in the graphs there, how low we rank, especially compared to other school districts of our size. And I do believe it is a community-driven decision, not a board-driven decision. And the least we can do is put this back out to the community to have them decide. The numbers here are very strong, they've been very consistent over time. And they've actually, in the past two to three years, have proven almost 100% on the mark in our budget forecasts and our enrollment forecasts. So I appreciate the work that's gone into that. I do believe that if we get this fund and we do set up a committee to provide oversight of the spend, that we will expect and, and hope to improve academic outcomes, particularly with personalized learning and personalized pathways for that learning, which is, by the way, a kind of a combination of what I hear from the community all the time. Why did we drop this class? Why can't my kid excel here? Where is, you know, why is this class size what it is? And we're combining all different levels of learning into one class size. Why don't we have the extra support staff? Why don't we have the extra counselors? So again, going back to the survey, we have a survey where they went out and asked for a rate with no promises of anything, but then asked what people wanted. You can't get that stuff for free and you can't get that, those benefits of what a school district should provide. Okay, without investing in your school district and expecting inflation to all of a sudden disappear because it hasn't. So I think the least we could do is move ahead with this and, and send this information out to our community to help them decide. Does anybody have any other comments or we're going to move on?
I don't really, I don't have a lot to add other than just kind of sharing my, what I'm grappling with, which, which I think we all maybe are a little bit, is the, the, I mean, a lot of, I'm having a lot of thoughts. Most of them have been said, most of them have been shared, I don't need to reiterate it. But I think the thing I'm grappling with the most is exactly what Dr. Thomas said about if we do $45, if that's what we go for and ask for, we can provide what we feel is a, a good return and a solid product, right? Where you're, you're investing in the future and you feel good about it. At 30, it doesn't, we know we have more support given the survey. Now, who did the survey touch? You know, it's not the whole demographic. So I'm just grappling with that, with that. I just want to share that with the board because I think it's, I think it's responsible of the superintendent and administration to come forward with what they believe would be best for the district. And I think it's responsible of the board to weigh that with what the community is telling us. So I'm not saying we shouldn't pursue this as proposed. I'm saying that would be the conversation that I'm interested in.
So can I ask a clarifying question? When you said we shouldn't pursue this as proposed, but you're asking for?
I'm just sharing my thoughts with the board, saying that's where my head is at currently. And I, while I do think the $45 proposal is what we need and what is right, I want to be realistic with the feedback from the community.
Okay, so we'll be discussing this again at the study session. But thank you very much for the robust conversation with everybody here.